Good evening, and I'd like to call the March 27, 2019 Meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present. For our next item of business, we will have our invocation, and I'd like to turn that over to our Student Liaison Representative, Jeremy Taylor.
Good evening, you all. Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have two students from Langley Elementary School, Sarah Rowe and Marwiza Dequan. I don't know if I pronounced that correctly, but if you two students could come up to the podium, and you'll start by reciting the pledge, and then you'll read whatever you have for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I'm sharing with you today "Happy Dreamer" by Peter H. Reynolds. I'm a happy dreamer. I'm really good at dreaming. Daydreams, big dreams, little dreams, creative dreams, dreamer maximus. Sometimes, the world tells me, sit still, be quiet, pay attention, focus.
But my dreams have a mind of their own. Sometimes, my mind just takes flight. I hear a beat, and I gotta move. Then I hear another, and another. I wish you could hear inside my head, trumpety zigzag jazz.
Sometimes, I'm a quiet dreamer, when I make time to stay still and hear myself think, to let go and see what takes shape. Sometimes, I'm a swing-high dreamer, way up high beyond the clouds, so high I can touch the sky.
I can also be a loud dreamer. Hello, world, I'm a shout-at-the-top-of-my-lungs dreamer, even if I'm just a loud-inside-my-head dreamer. Sometimes, I'm a colorful dreamer, painting my own path full of surprises at every turn.
I can dream even when the lights are out, all circuits on, fireworks, I light up. I'm all ears, eyes, heart and mind.
I have so many dreams, it can get messy, creative chaos. Cleaning up hides my treasures. If you make me, I will put my things away, but then, there is less me to show. These are moments I feel alone, boxed in.
And yet, I always find a way back, plunging into amazing, delightful, happy dreams. I'm really good at being me, a dreamer, surprising, caring, funny, gentle, and smart.
And when I tumble back to earth, I know I'm okay. Dreamers have a way of bouncing back and moving forward. There are so many ways to be a happy dreamer. What kind are you? But the best way to be a dreamer?
Just be you.
That was a wonderful selection. I'm interested, what made you choose that piece there? Well, I can probably infer that you two are dreamers, that you have dreams. What do you want to do when you graduate from high school and all that good stuff?
I want to be a fashion stylist.
Wow. What about you?
I probably would want a job to work with animals or help people.
Wow. That's wonderful. So what do you like most about school?
My favorite subject is social studies.
I like going to school because I meet a lot of people, and every day, I get to learn new things and experience more.
That's very good. I, myself, happen to be a social studies person, myself, so can you tell us who you've brought with you today?
I brought my brother, Atal. He's in fourth grade in my school. And my mom, my little sister, Prii, and my little sister, Ingeza.
Okay.
And I brought my mother, who is a pre-K teacher at my school.
Wow. And so, do you have, you guys have administrators with you all as well, so why don't you introduce them?
Well, this is our principal, Mrs. Branks.
Okay.
And right next to Mrs. Branks is my teacher, Ms. Panero. And over here, we have our friend, Mrs. Brady, Mrs. Martin.
Okay. Well, could you all please stand and be recognized? Thank you all for supporting these two young women. Wonderful students, I'm sure. Thank you so much for your selection. We all enjoyed it, and I hope that you continue to dream and that your dreams come true for you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yes, Ms. Henry?
I want to congratulate you on your selection, which was wonderful to start with, but your delivery as well. At some point in my checkered career, I was a high school forensics judge, and forensics is not crime investigation, it's public speaking. And I think that you would outdo some high school students that I heard in poetry recitation. You did an excellent, excellent job, so continue that. As Jeremy can tell you, there are lots of opportunities for public speaking, particularly if you're interested in social studies and debate and all that, but you all are well on the way to being excellent public speakers. Thank you.
Any other board members? Thank you two again, and to the families, we want to say thank you for allowing these students to share with us tonight. We really did appreciate it. And congratulations to the Langley family as well. Thank you. As we move on to the next item of business, we are looking at item 1.03, which is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and second by Dr. Mason that we approve the adoption of tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item for business is recognitions, and we'll call on our Executive Director for Public Relations and Marketing, Ms. Kelly Gole, and she is going to be assisted by School Board Member, Dr. Richard Mason.
Good evening, Dr. Mason.
Good evening.
Would you like to... All right. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Kilgore, members of the School Board, Superintendent Smith, and members of our Hampton Schools family. Tonight, we have the opportunity to celebrate student athletes from Phoebus High School, Phoebus's 2018-2019 Boys Basketball Team. So would Coach James Daniel, your coaching staff, and your team, please join us onstage to be recognized. If you all would please come up and line up straight across facing the audience. Get all the way in. Keep on scooting down. There we go. I'm gonna let the coaches come this way, though. All right. I'm gonna come on this side of you.
Okay. Can you move this over for me?
Yeah, just to help him out. All right, go ahead.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Let's start with the Peninsula District Title. Our Phoebus High School boys won the Peninsula District Title this year with a 17-1 record. This is the second year in a row that the boys have brought that title home. The Phantoms continued winning in the postseason. The Phoebus team captured the Region 3A Championship with the win over IC Norcom with a score of 73 to 62. The Phantoms went on to the VHSL Class III State Tournament. In the quarterfinal game, played on March 1st at Bethel High School, the Phoebus team beat Culpeper County by a score of 85 to 45. They then advanced to the state semifinal game against Marshall on March 5th at Heritage High School and won in overtime with a score of 74 to 71.
All right. So I'm gonna share with you, the final game of the season was the state championship game held at VCU in Richmond, Virginia on March 7th. Our Phoebus Phantoms took on Northside High School of Roanoke, Virginia. Our Phantoms played an outstanding game, and I was unable to attend that game, but I will say, there was a lot of support there. We had our Superintendent Dr. Smith, Dr. Woods was there, Dr. Cagiano, Dr. Haynes, Dr. Owens, Ms. Cherry, our board chair, they were all there rooting you gentlemen on, and it was such a close game. And I will say, I followed through Twitter the entire time, and it was driving me nuts when it wasn't updated instantaneously. We will say that unfortunately, the Phantoms fell short with a score of 58 to 60, but they were named the VHSL Class III Runner-up. So congratulations.
And on behalf of our Chair, Ms. Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, the Hampton School Board, Superintendent Smith, I am honored to recognize the team for a job well done and for capturing the Region 3A Championship. A team certificate is coming and will be delivered to your school real soon. Congratulations.
All right. And at this time, I would like to invite Coach Daniel to the microphone to introduce the members of his team, his coaching staff, and to say a few words.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank God. We're a team of faith. We practice it, we live it, and I'd like to thank my wife, who supports me through thick and thin. You know, it's surprising, because if she was here, I would joke her a little bit, because she's like my coach. Also, I'd like to acknowledge these young men with a 26-3 overall record, best in Phoebus history. Give them a hand. I want to thank the School Board, Dr. Smith, Dr. Woods, Dr. Stapleton, Mr. Gavin, Coach Ward, and yes, the teachers at Phoebus High School for recognizing the team throughout the season and support. I would also like at this time for the parents of my players to stand. And a big round of hands. Without this great support that we have, we wouldn't be who we are. I mean, we just can't get it done alone. I would like to recognize my coaching staff, Coach Lane, Coach Brown, Coach White, Coach Lewis, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Hardy, who was our schoolkeeper throughout the year and who traveled with us. At this time, Coach Lane is gonna introduce the team at this time, and as they come, y'all just step up, and I'd like to personally shake your hand.
All right. How's everyone doing today? We're gonna start off with the managers. First, we have Talia Brooks. Kofi Wright. Jacory L. And our senior manager for years, Maya Brooks. Start them with the players freshmen. We have Najee Smalls. Dejon Freeman. Jeremara White. Kahim Zarif. Zakeem Brown. With our junior class, we have Mahir Sharif. Giovanni Arroyo. Onto our seniors, Antoine Edwards. Dorian Hill. Adrian Payton. Deontay Leach.
Real quick, I want to recognize Deontay Leach. We call him down at Phoebus, Big Body. He was first-team All-Region and first-team All-State. He also finished his career, Coach was telling him the last couple of games, "I need 20, I need 10." He finished his career with 984 points. Let's give him a hand. And I would also like to recognize Kyrie Temple, who was Player of the Year in the district, Player of the Year in the region, and first-team All-State. One thing we pride ourselves on at Phoebus is sending our young men and giving them opportunity to play college basketball. And I would like to say, as of today, every one of our seniors have opportunities to play at the next level. We have something that's going on this weekend, something that's going on the following weekend for visits, but I was speaking to head coaches last night, and they're excited for the young men, excited for them to come. Now, we just have to see if it's a good fit. And in recognition of that, these guys will be part of history, because for the last nine years, every kid who has played for Phoebus High School Boys Basketball has gone on to college. So let's give them a hand. And last but not least, I'd like to thank our student body. I mean, Phoebus High School was the electric place to play in this year, and without that support with the student body, I mean, it's just a place that I wouldn't coach nowhere else. But I want to thank everybody for attending tonight and recognizing the Boys Basketball Team. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You all can go ahead and have a seat. Thank you, Coach. All right, again, let's give these scholar athletes a big round of applause. And so, before we close, and Coach, you did a great job. You did such a great job that you did half of my job tonight, so thank you. We've already recognized all of our parents that are here, but if we could also recognize our administration, I saw Dr. Stapleton in the audience. There she is back there. And I know that Mr. Gavin and Ms. Incremenius, Ms. Williams and Mr. Majet, as well as the Athletic Director, Mr. Ward, have always been very supportive, so thank you. And I'd also like to thank Beth Mayer, who is our Coordinator of Athletics. Please stand to be recognized. A very big thanks to all of our parents, our administrators, our teachers, and our students, because as Coach just said, you know, without your support, it really is not possible. And the one thing I really wanted to end on, but he again stole my job, but thank you, was an impressive overall record of 26 to 3 this season, and they are, were the Region 3A Champions. So congratulations. And Madam Chair, that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you, Dr. Mason.
Thank you, Ms. Gole, and thank you, Dr. Mason. Any comments from board members? Before you all leave, Coach Daniels, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you for your leadership. You may not be aware, but in this community, everybody talks about the fact that you ensure that your young men have an opportunity for college. And that's, that conversation is in barber shops, it's said along streets. Everybody knows what Coach Daniels does for his team, and they respect it. So I just want to say that. Also, young men, we were never, ever so proud of you as we were in Richmond. You all had a fantastic season. I was able to travel there, as they say, with Dr. Smith and some other administrators. I personally sat next to Ms. Mayer, wherein during the last three minutes, I think I had a chokehold on her that would not stop, but let me tell you, you guys can pass that ball. I don't know how you pass a ball, looking one way and pass it the other way, but we were never so proud of you. So you all have a lot to be thankful for and a lot to be blessed for. Thank you again. And we see that you also have your number-one fan in the audience, Ms. Geraldine, who's gonna always be there, and we love that you love our children. Moving on to our next item of business, we have our consent agenda. That consists of 3.01 Personnel Report Number 2019-08, 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of March 6, 2019, 3.03 Minutes of School Board Meeting and Budget Hearing of March 13, 2019. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Mugler?
Madam Chair, we have one member who was unable to be present at the 13th meeting, so I think we may want to consider amending the motion to pull that one off and vote on it separately. 3.03?
What I will do, I will just abstain from voting on that particular item, as I was...
Well, it's all one consent agenda.
Okay.
They're all coupled.
Need me to change my motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, then, let's just vote on them one at a time. Okay, we can vote on the Personnel Report and the Minutes of March 6th at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It has been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we vote on item 3.01 Personnel Report 2019-08 and 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of March 6, 2019 as a block. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote? Oh, sorry.
Madam Chair...
Dr. Woodhouse?
Isn't 3.02 also one that would have to be abstained by...
Madam Chairman, how about if we vote on the Personnel Report?
Dr. Woodhouse, that one's not on here yet. The one you missed was last week. It's not on the...
The 20th.
The 20th.
So you're good. You're fine.
You were here on the 6th.
I'm sorry.
I know you have a busy calendar.
I do.
Okay. So we can keep... Is there any more discussion? Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries.
Is the third time charmed?
I think it may be.
I move that we approve item 3.3, the Minutes of the School Board Meeting and Budget Hearing of March 13th.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we approve item 3.03, Minutes of the School Board Meeting and Budget Hearing of March 13, 2019. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Mr. Samuels?
Abstain.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item of business is the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. I have received one. Ms. Bowles, would you please read the protocol?
Yes. Citizens are invited to address the School Board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the School Board, please complete the forum and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the School Board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the School Board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual students, as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the School Board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the School Board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the Board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the Superintendent for Research and Response. The Superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The School Board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Our speaker is Stacy Shorter.
Chairwoman Stevens Cherry, members of the School Board, Superintendent Dr. Smith, and HCS staff. My name is Stacy Shorter, and I am the Chair of the Education Committee for the NAACP Hampton Branch. On behalf of our President, Gaylene Conoynton, we are here to invite you, members of the School Board, HCS staff, families, and citizens, to the First Annual Remembrance Unity March and Public Assembly, reliving the dream, tomorrow's leaders, in commemoration of Dr. Martin Luther King's assassination. So this event is scheduled during spring break. We are hoping that as many staff and children, students, that can come. It's scheduled for Thursday, April 4th, at 12:00 noon. We're going to begin the march at the corner of East Mercury and Hope Street and march over the MLK Memorial Bridge onto Fort Monroe, and we will end at the Historic Marker, the 1619 Marker, where the first enslaved Africans were brought to shore. This is a really important event for us in the NAACP as well as in the city of Hampton, and we are very much hoping that you will join us. It is so important to our President, Ms. Gaylene Conoynton, that she offered to babysit my children if I would come here tonight and invite you all, and if you've ever met them, you know what a big deal that is. So we hope that you will be able to join us. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Bowles, have you received any more...
No, I have not.
...questions to speak? Okay, thank you. Moving on with the printed agenda, we now move to deliberations, which consists of item 5.01, the Perkins Plan. Are there any questions from board members regarding the Perkins Plan? Mr. Seth Black is here to answer any we may have, but will you be giving us a brief overview of some things?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Chair Cherry, Vice Chair Kilgore, and members of the Board, and Dr. Smith. So this year, we are gonna be talking about the Perkins Five, Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century Act. This is a new version of the Perkins Plan, with VDOE has opted to use the transition year, but ensure that they are, we are up to, ahead of the curve as far as transitioning to, from the Perkins Four to Perkins Five. Within the Perkins Five, we are looking at building on current successes, data-driven decision-making, reducing secretarial authority, increasing stakeholder involvement, revising accountability indicators, enhancing efforts to serve special populations, and encouraging innovation. What I have presented, there's the digital copy, which includes the Perkins Plan and a comprehensive local needs assessment, which is new to the Perkins Five, and the Plan to Study, which will be referred to in Career and Technical Education Schedule Three. Additionally, we have the certifications and assurance page of the hard copy, the performance assessment, which will be referred to in the Schedule Nine, and Schedules 1 through 16, and then Schedules 17 and 18, which is the budget. In Schedule One, stakeholders, which includes stakeholder participation and involvement. The CTE Advisory Council and members of the specific academies of Hampton Advisory Boards supplied information on curriculum needs, lab equipment needs, and student activity participation. Classrooms and supplying professional knowledge in the classrooms. They hosted student and faculty on visits and internships and externships for teachers. They touched on, the Perkins Plan has touched on at each CTE Advisory Council meeting, and we just had a thorough review in our last meeting. I forgot to mention about the Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment, which is new to this year's Perkins Plan. That can be found in a digital copy, and it's broken down into five areas. Section A, which is the performance of students. Section B, which provides a description of how CTE sufficiently, is sufficient in size, scope... Is sufficient in size, scope, and quality aligned to local end-demand industry sectors or occupations and designed to meet local education or economic needs or identified state and local needs by workforce boards. Section C is the implementation of CTE programs to study. Section D is improving the recruitment, retention, and training of CTE personnel. And Section E is the implementation of equal access to high-quality career and technical education programs. This will be referred to again when we get to the budget section as each budget line item has to be aligned with one of the local needs assessment sections. For Section... For Schedule II, which is the stakeholder involvement continued. Something new for Perkins Five is the addition of a stakeholder group, which is the out-of-school homeless or at-risk youth. And the participation through our advisory boards is... Through the CTE Advisory Council and the Academy Advisory Boards, we are an exemplar in community participation. Section... Section III, which refers to the plan of study. In this, you can look at the digital file as well for the local plan of study. We chose Network Systems IT, specific to cybersecurity, as a submitted plan of study this year. Why we chose this is just the opportunities around this for not only our young students, but also for the professionals. There's content alignment to provide dual enrollment opportunities for pathway students, and we'll continue representation on various cybersecurity initiatives, including the Go Virginia, Virginia Cyber Alliance, and students participating in the Cyber Patriot Competition, internships, opportunities through their academies and the Virginia Cyber Alliance. And also, it just lends itself to industry certifications and dual enrollment opportunities, and leads to workforce, career, and study certificates, bachelor's degree or master's degree in the field of cybersecurity. And after I printed it, I noticed I had typed "dual" incorrectly, and I have fixed that in the hard copy of the plan for submission. So moving on to Schedule IV, the... Is the Special Populations Report. You can see that there. Now, within the Special Populations Report, we look to... At breaking down barriers and providing opportunities for special populations to meet state-adjusted levels of performance, and finally, the nondiscrimination clause, which is aligned with Hampton City Schools Policy AC. Strategies around that, we include ensuring that the accommodations for the 504 and IEPs help for the English language learning population whenever we see possible. Next up is Schedule V, which is Page Eight. And Schedule V is strengthening and improving academic technical skills. Every CTE program is represented in Hampton City Schools. We have some sort of class or program aligned to each one of them. Schedule VI is work-based learning opportunities. Various workplace learning opportunities existed in the schools, and including career exploration in the middle schools. And we're just looking to grow that as a collective CTE school district here, and align, work closely with the city of Hampton and the academies of Hampton. As we move on to Schedule VIII. Schedule VIII is around the professional development of the plan. You can see some numbers in there with the professional development. We will continue to support teacher professional development, encourage them to explore the opportunities, bring in professionals, whether it's from industries... From industry or for OSHA standards, and really just encourage the student... Or the teachers to get out experience and bring it back and lead professional development sessions on their own. For career... For the Schedule IX, for this section, you will need to refer to the performance assessment section in the hard copy packet. You can see that we have met... Hampton City Schools CTE has met all of the performance standards with the exception of standard 2S1A, technical skills attainment, and student competency rates for all completers and special populations. This is the third year that we haven't met this standard, but we had seen massive growth, or noticeable growth, not massive. For all completers, last year was 84, and this year to 90%. And for special populations, we saw growth in 81% to 88%. We will continue to fund teacher professional development for best practice, continue to provide opportunities for the CTE teachers to team on their academy teams, finding best strategies and intervention strategies to continue this improvement and growth, and ensure that grading practices are aligned with the actual student competency records. Moving on to Section 10, which is on Pages 16 and 17, is the improvement, expansion, and modernization of the career and technical education programs. The CTE Advisory Council and the academies of Hampton Advisory Boards are critical in their efforts to initiate, improve, and expand and modernize CTE programs that exist or will be developed in the division. Industry partners are asked to ensure that there's relevance in the pathways, the plans of study, the resource and the training and equipment in the CTE programs. They're also asked to inform purchases and upgrades to ensure that the HCS CTE programs are meeting industry standards and trends. And then, moving on from that, that flows nicely into the... Or no, I'm sorry. Take that back. The next one is the using data. With our data, we will continue to establish goals, identify related outcomes of practices and inputs, determine data sources and performance indicators, examine the data, and set performance targets, and monitor performance over time, using this data collection to focus on prescribed goals in the analysis for specific targets. Schedule XII is linkage to employment and counseling and placement services, including the career counseling, job fairs, and career counseling. This is aligned nicely with what we're doing with the academies of Hampton, starting with not only just Success 101 in the high schools, but also in pushing down into middle school with aims to push down further and further for career exploration. Schedule XIII is, once again, the Equality and Provisions for General Education Provision Act. XIV, Labor Market Needs, we kind of touched on both of those already with how we laid out the academies of Hampton, and how we plan to with new courses, and how we move ahead. And Schedule XV is the participation in the Regional Technical Education Center, New Horizons. We continue our partnership, have a strong partnership with New Horizons, and just the information on what percentage of the Perkins budget would go to the New Horizons plan. Schedule XIV is... Or I said the labor market needs already. I'm sorry. Schedule XVI is just the CTE financial data that you can see right there. Moving on to Schedule XVII, we have our... New to it, you can see it looks a little bit different than the budget section from previous years, where we have the required use column in for the first three rows, 1, 2, and 3, which are professional development activities for special populations to include non-traditional and regional program participation for our divisions. With the aligned comprehensive local needs, you see that coming from the local needs assessment that was submitted... That must be submitted with this Perkins Plan. That will... The local needs assessment must be submitted annually with the option to submit it annually. For the column three, the local use of funds, and column four, for the fund selection, you can refer to the digital copy in Appendix B for the codes for the R2C, which is professional development. So you can look at that at your leisure. Major supports in this budget include, of course, professional development, upgrading equipment and maintaining equipment, support for the career and technical student organizations, specifically within special populations, and career explorations for all students. Lastly, of Section 18 is the administrative... And administrative equipment funds. These funds are primarily used for curriculum and program development, extra professional sources for... And contracted sources for education pieces, including the completion of the annual completer survey that we have to follow up with each of the graduated CTE completers and travel expenditures, et cetera. And that would be everything I have regarding the Perkins Plan, Sections 1 through 18.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Any comments from Board members or questions? Yes, Ms. Henry.
I'm sorry I didn't get to be at our last advisory meeting, or I probably would have asked the questions then.
That's okay.
The first question is, people need to understand that this is vocational education. CTE is career and technical, which sounds jazzier than vocational, but we all want our children to have a job and a career. So it's career and technical education is what we want for every student, and fortunately, the academies are going to promote that mindset, which is a good thing. Carl Perkins money used to provide federal funds for a lot... Most people, most school districts wouldn't have vocational career education without those funds back in the day, and they were significant. They're much less significant for us than they used to be. But looking at this number, is this up or down from last year?
We were not given our allotted amount for this year, so we based off of... They instruct us to write it based off of last year's allotment, and then we submit an amendment when it does come out. So we have not received this year's.
So...
It is expected to increase, though.
I was thinking that looked like a little more generous number.
Yes.
Okay. And most of these funds go to staff development and to student activities and equipment. Those are the three biggies.
Yes.
They're not paying your salary or anybody else.
No.
They're to help improve the programs that we support, essentially, on ourselves. I had another question, which had to do with this... Looking at the performance assessment, one of the things you have to do on this report is tell all the things that you've done and account for those. And as I looked at Page One, I thought, wow, these are really good numbers. We're doing... We're way ahead of the state goals for us in terms of our vocational completers. And I think that's a good thing, because we believe that we're going to have more and more vocational completers, and it's my personal view that vocational complete... Kids who are involved in a vocational or career and technical program see some point in what they're doing in school, and therefore, they are better students in general, and not just in their CTE classes. And we certainly see examples of wonderful success here. And we've beaten all the state goals except in that one of 2S1A. And what surprises me is if you look at 2S1E, we're way, way ahead when you add in those students who are CTE completers but did not manage to come out ahead on their career program, but were also advanced studies diploma students. So you have to remember that CTE students are not something that's a different category of student. These are students who are also advanced studies diploma students. And so that raises it way up. Do we have a handle on why the student attainment on technical skills is down? Is it a curricular issue, do we think? Or not quite lining up with how the assessments are?
What I think it is, and I've looked at this, I haven't got the detailed breakdown yet this year for our programs, but you see a couple of areas where the students may suffer in grade-wise. Maybe they don't necessarily get that 80% in the grading, but they can kind of check on the competencies so they can perform the task. But ultimately, if you can perform the task at the end, it's a different grading piece alignment there. So it's... I might not be able to maybe code an HTML document on the first try, but maybe at the end, you kind of reach that efficiency rating, but your grades don't necessarily reflect it. So I think a lot of it is students maybe not... It's not necessarily curriculum alignment. It may be some of that, and we're working on that, as we said, as we continue to put funds in it. But it's also, I think it's just different grading practices and methods of recording our...
In fact, for an industry standard, we're teaching not for a grade, but for mastery. And if we understand that, I remember the first time one of my very brilliant students took a Cisco programming test, and he said, "I got an 85 on it." And I said, "Well, when you take it again, just think what your grade is going to be." He said, "You mean I... That doesn't seem right to take it again." Yes, we want to get you to 100% mastery on it. And so I think it's the idea in delivering instruction and an assessment that we... They were teaching for mastery and not just a grade. We're not trying to sort these students. We're all trying to get them 100% to here. And the other thing that I think is going to help that a whole lot is that sometimes students are called CTE completers because they have completed this course, and this course, and this course, and they weren't necessarily in a focused program. And the academies are going to put those children in a focused program that's going to align that skill development as they go forward. So I think, since that's the only one of these that isn't way in excess of the state programs, I suspect that that has... Those two factors have something to do with it, teaching for mastery, and also the idea that we're not just taking a menu of assorted CTE courses that are called electives, but they're not electives. They're the focus of what we're doing in school, and therefore, we're going to come out with a whole different result. Thank you for this report. It's always fun to do, I know, and we thank all of our advisory committee that wades through it with you, and thank you very much for that.
Yes, and the advisory... CTE Advisory Council and the academies of Hampton Advisory Boards, I can take a moment now just to remark on what exceptional partners that we have. You see it not just when I meet for the advisory councils. Any day, you can go into a school, and there's a good chance that you're going to find a community stakeholder really heavily involved in the students' education.
Doing so much, much, work on a day-to-day basis.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Black?
Just one quick question.
Yes, Dr. Mason.
I don't know if I missed this or not, but seeing in all of... On Page Eight and Nine, your Schedule V, when it comes to the senior research project, it seems that you have that in each of the divisions except for agricultural education and career connections.
Yes, career connection is going to be more of that Success 101, the baseline for freshmen. And for the agriculture, this is... Last year was the first year it got up off the board, so we don't have the capstone experience and senior opportunities for them yet, because they'll just be going into the junior year.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Black. I did have one just comment. I had an opportunity to look this over the last couple of days, and I'm glad you just made your statement that you did, because it ties in with the comments that I wanted to make. It's on Schedule V, where you talk about strengthening and improving academic and technical skills. I see you made quite a bit of reference to the academies and the great work that's being done there. But I can tell you, the last line is the one that caught my eye. When it talks about community involvement, it's at an all-time high in Hampton City Schools and is evident in all of the four high schools. And I would imagine every school division can't say that.
Absolutely.
I think it's fortunate that we can. I think it's fortunate that we've got people like Dr. Woods and Ms. Hurd, and that entire academy staff, if you will, and the people who make sure that we get it done in terms of community involvement. And Ann Bain is here, and she's one of those people as well, And Ann Bain is here, and she, she's one of those people as well, and has been doing such for a long, long time. So I just want to say how much I appreciate the fact that we're able to just highlight those wonderful things that we have going in our division in terms of partnerships. So thank you.
You're very welcome. I'm proud also.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions on that deliberation, that will be moved to action for our next meeting. Moving on to items for actions. They include 6.01 Superintendent's Proposed FY20 School Operating Budget, 6.02 Funds Fifty-One, Sixty, Sixty-Five, and Ninety-Four FY20 Budgets, and 6.03 Student Fees for 2019-2020. Would we like to look at 6.01 for Superintendent's Proposed FY20 Operating, School Operating Budget? And if so, is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we vote to approve the Superintendent's Proposed FY20 School Operating Budget that we have all reviewed at some length.
Second.
Okay. It has been properly moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve Item 6.01, the Superintendent's Proposed FY20 School Operating Budget. Is there any discussion from board members about this item? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the votes?
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
I have a statement to read. As a member of the School Board of the City of Hampton, Virginia, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the adoption of the 2019-2020 School Operating Budget, because my wife is an employee of Hampton City Schools. However, I believe I am able to participate in the vote on the budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. My vote is aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, Item 6.02 Funds Fifty-One, Sixty, Sixty-Five, and Ninety-Four FY20 Budgets. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Mugler and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we move approval for Funds Fifty-One, Sixty, Sixty-Five, and Ninety-Four FY20 Budgets. Is there any discussion on Item 6.02? Hearing none. Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the votes?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. And the final one is 6.03 Student Fees for 2019-2020. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept 6.03 for approval.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Dr. Woodhouse and seconded by Ms. Mugler that we approve Item 6.03 Student Fees for 2019-2020. Is there any discussion from any board members? Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the votes?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. And as we get ready to move into Item Number Seven, which is information, I'd just like to say, Dr. Smith, on behalf of the board, we understand that accountability is crucial in any budgeting. And we feel this budget demonstrates how we determine we're going to use funds to continue to increase student achievement. And we're also pleased that you've looked very carefully at the financial accountability, because this is taxpayers' money, and we must be good stewards of that. So we appreciate you and your team for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Item Seven, Information. Our next meeting of the Hampton, of the Hampton School Board will be Wednesday, April Seventeenth, 2019, at the Rupert Sargent Building, which is located at One Franklin Street. Is there any information to come before the superintendent?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to acknowledge the fact that we have spring break that will begin on April One of, certainly, it's hard to believe, that's just next week. And, and so prior to that, I want to say that we appreciate the hard work of our faculty and staff at all of the school sites, and, and certainly at the various operations centers of Hampton City Schools. It's much deserved, and we trust that individuals of our team will get some rest, and we look forward to their return after spring break. There are some of us who will still be in the office. And, but we look forward to the return of our faculty and staff and members of, who serve at many of the operations in terms of the various centers that we have for Hampton City Schools. I want to also say to the board, just before we leave, thank you for your approval of the Superintendent's Recommended FY2020 Budget. And again, to acknowledge Ms. Brittany Dorch and members of her department. I know that there are some individuals present with us, Ms. Ashley. She is here, and other members of the team. And I cannot say enough about their hard work and attention to detail, and we greatly appreciate that. And so I want to acknowledge the members of the team. Also, want to say to members of the Division Leadership Team in particular to acknowledge their continued support and the hard work that they put forth in the development of this particular budget. And I did not acknowledge during my remarks when I was presenting, presenting the budget the last time, certainly Ms. Robin Ruth. I said it as a part of our Division Leadership Team. But I want to thank the members of the Human Resource Department, along with Ms. Ruth, for their attention to detail, and certainly, as it relates to the development around teacher compensation and the teacher salary scale in particular. And finally, Madam Chair, members of the board, I want to thank you for your involvement and your continued engagement in the process, and how you give the proper attention to the development of the budget. And you're not sitting there without attention to detail. And so I want to thank you for what you give on a daily basis, and in particular, as it relates to the development of this particular budget. And so thank you, and certainly to the community at large. We look forward to serving our young people as we have, and doing what is right for young people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We appreciate that. Any comments from board members? Any information from board members? Hearing none, this meeting stands adjourned.